Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to call the Coronavirus Ad-Hoc Committee Work Session to order at this time. Ms. Carrilla, if you will call the role for the committee members, please.
Paul Livingston.
Present.
Present.
Baron.
Here.
Newton.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you, and I also would just like to acknowledge our Chair, Mr. Walker, old Walker being with us, as well as our Vice Chair, Ms. Mackey, joining us at this time. Our next order of business is the adoption of the agenda.
A move out, Chair.
I do have one change I'd like to make.
I'll second it for discussion.
Thank you. And that, that change that I would like to make is, I would like to discuss Item C before Item B. So we'll be switching those items around. I think for continuity and conversation-wise and discussion, it'll, our discussion will flow a lot better. And then, also because of Item B, those items, if we run out of time, we can take care of in our committee. Any further discussion?
Seconded.
Thank you. Carrilla.
Baron.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Motion approved.
So we've got three items before us, and the heart, I want to, I want to tee this up for us to have some dialogue. And, and that's pretty much what this meeting is going to be about. We, we tried to have this conversation in, in our committee, of course, hours, not enough time for us to do what we need to do, and really to get an understanding about the funds that we have and how we like to prioritize those and such. And so I've had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Brown and ACA Thomas, and they're going to be presenting some, some of the meat of the matter to us, and then we'll also need to take, although we won't be taking any action, we will be making some decisions that we'll be prepared to discuss further in our committee, as well as with our colleagues during full council meeting. So, Mr. Brown, I'll turn it over to you at this time, sir.
Good afternoon, members of the committee. Beginning with the first items, under eligibility criteria, those items generally are in your packet. What I did want to just touch basically with you briefly on is to make sure you have plenty of your time to give the staff and I some feedback on today, is the final guidance has been issued. For those of you who have the opportunity to either view some of the SEA training or attend in person, one of the things that you would notice is that they went over some final guidance, kind of Cliff Notes, by walking through a NACO presentation, and I certainly want to acknowledge, I know she's not present, but the clerk's office is going to provide you something that they actually went over in the meeting, but that Ms. McBride actually brought back from NACO, which is basically these kind of Cliff Notes versions of final guidance. So, it was also the NACO presentation that SEAC covered during their, their conference. But some of the things that they talked about in there that I thought were generally important in reference to the final guidance is, they outlined some of the things that you and I have been discussing, but they gave a bit of more definitive information about things that would be acceptable in the forms of projects and uses of different funding, depending on how much money you received. I will say for those of you who heard that presentation, which you've heard this term before, the term tranche. Richland County received our first tranche of funds, which was roughly around the $40 million range. And we have not received our second amount at this point, but that's where you get the $80 million from that everybody was referring to. So, we do expect to get that, and as the guidance showed, generally sometime before July. So, what we wanted to focus on for the committee today is really get input from you on the direction of how you saw these funds being used, but specific to the document you have in front of you on the agenda. When it talks about the final guidance, now we have that. When it talked about Richland County's specific requirements, the simple question there was, is there anything that Richland County was wanting to do separate and apart from the final guidance? Are there any, you know, criteria that you were going to want to put in place to say that when we utilize these funds, or how we utilize these funds, there is something that Richland County also wanted in place, other than just the general final guidance? And also in your packet, you will see something that we had submitted before. We didn't get into any details with it, was a potential draft application. One of the things we talked about with that application was simply this. A lot of times we've talked about in the past with coronavirus-related funds, that we want to get funds out as quickly as possible, and when we were dealing with the community efforts. With these particular funds, any sub-recipient, including Richland County, there is a reporting and documentation process that does not lend itself too speedy. You have to provide detailed information, you have to have backup, and you have to be able to authenticate your reasons. And I'll give you this one quick example, and then I turn it back over to you, Madam Chair. So, during the conference, I asked a question. When, when the President of the Senate was speaking about coronavirus-related funds, and specifically the money that the state was going to be dealing with, and what he said was that they were looking to approve of the 2.5 billion that they received, roughly 1.7 billion dollars of that, and they were looking to do it in water, sewer, broadband, and roads. And two key things that he talked about. One of the things he talked about was that part of that would require a match. So as we consider funding potential with these dollars, keep in mind that the state has potentially said that they would be looking to provide a match, or that the entities like us would need to provide a match to get some of those funds. So, that may be something we need to consider. And I asked a question, I asked, how much of a match would you all be talking about? And the response was 15 to 25%. So again, that's not a vote that's taking place at this point, but that was the President of the Senate talking about his understanding of what they were going to be looking to do related to ARP dollars being received from the state. So, when you think about projects that, that we might do, just kind of keep that in mind. And then also, the other thing is, he talked about was, I asked him, would there be any other way other than matching funds that entities like counties or municipalities would be able to receive ARP dollars from the state? And he said, because of the criteria associated with the American Rescue Plan Funds, they really had not considered other methods. He said, because we have to make sure that the project that we fund comply with the regulations. And he started talking about the, I won't say owners, but the details that they would require. And I thought that was interesting, because we had talked about some of those same things. So, so those two things I just wanted to just kind of update the committee on. But with that said, Madam Chair, I turn it over to you for any initial questions, but we're certainly ready to hear what the committee was interested in sharing related to how we might be addressing these ARP dollars.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Ms. Newton, you recognized, and then Ms. Livingston.
I'll let Mr. Livingston go first, he might have my question.
I just had a follow-up question, you know, regarding the, the match funds, did they specify where that match can come from or cannot come from?
They did not. What we do know is, we can't mix federal dollars.
Local dollars and match, match state dollars.
Right, so, but no, they did not. Or he did not.
I'm sorry, Mr. Livingston, are you finished?
That's all, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, and I didn't hear this presentation, and so forgive me, this is a basic question, but from what you just said about the President of the Senate's comments, that leads me to believe that they are going to set aside a certain portion of their funding and allow governments, look, governments and counties and municipalities to apply for it, is that correct?
That was the implication, and I think if you listened, if you were able to hear the broadband discussion, I think it's going to be something like that, where there are possible funds set aside that they utilize in some competitive way to try to determine, you know, how they're going to meet out those funds. But those individuals who have the ability to appropriate funding towards the match will, will be in a better position unless you're in a county maybe, that, or someone that just can't, because you don't have enough funding. They talked about some possibility of waiving that, but thinking about our size and our county, I don't potentially see us being able to be one of those groups.
Somehow, I think you might be right, Mr. Brown. So, one, one other question, and again, I know that you can't speak on behalf of the Senate, but in that presentation, among the different categories of funding that the ARP funds can go for, did they say, these are the priority areas that we think we will fund and set aside? I know there was a focus, for example, on the, the infrastructure, water, and sewer, and broadband, but did they kind of give any other priorities?
He did not say, he said it, and I can say in that order, but he, those were the four. Water, sewer, broadband, and roads. That, that was what he said. But he did not get into any prioritization or, or when he was just speaking to the, to the group, and I didn't ask him for a priority.
Thank you, and, I'm sorry, last question, Ms. Baron, because I, I might be able to save some things I was going to propose for this. From a, from a county and advocacy, advocacy perspective, what will we be doing to stay on top of that process so that we know when, when they release whatever their guidelines are, what the timeframes are, so that we can avail ourselves of those dollars?
Yeah, so, so two things. One, we certainly are going to be in contact with individuals that we have there. I mean, one of the things that I've talked to a few people and told them, I definitely want to be a part of that conversation and make sure to know what's going on. Also, we did go ahead and secure our state lobby, so we, we believe through our efforts and through those efforts, we will know when we can have access to that funding, to whether it's an application or however, so.
Thank you, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Anything from you, Mr. Chair, or Vice Chair? So, before we move to the next item, I think that there is some discussion that needs to take place at this point. And the discussion that we, we need to have here is, if we want to stipulate any type of requirements for the applicants to those who, individuals who will be applying, if they're nonprofits. I had an opportunity to kind of just go back and review the, the COVID, we call it the COVID-19 pandemic relief grant guidelines that we use earlier, the earlier part of 2020. And I think that when we look at requirements, and that, that's a pot of money that we had, I think, some for businesses, some for nonprofits. And when we look at the guidelines that were put forth, I think that this was, this would give us a strong base to be able to start with minimal requirements. It's something that, that we're, you know, anyone who's applied before can be familiar with it, and their basic fund, their basic requirements, and we do want to make sure that these dollars are attainable for the general community. And so, I'm not sure if any of our colleagues are familiar with the document, but I will be glad to just kind of go over some head, some headlines of the eligibility, and that is that you have to be a 501(c)(3), and that is registered with the Internal Revenue Code, registered with Secretary of State's office, the dollars can't be used for religious, religious purposes. And I'm just giving you headlines here. There's some fundraising you can't, that you can't do fundraising, and then you can't re-grant or sub-grant these dollars. And there's some guidelines when it talks about contractual agreements, and just the basic things of saying, the basic things they're saying, that the grants are not made to individuals. And those are high points. If there's anything that we'd like for the staff to kind of lift up even further in this application process, or maybe we want to omit in this, I think this is the time that we would want to have this conversation. Ms. Mackey, you're recognized.
Thank you, and I do apologize, this is in here, I may have missed it, there's several pages. Have we determined percentage amounts that we are giving to, or wanting to allocate to nonprofits? Have we divided it out into sectors at all, the percentage amounts?
We, we have not done that. We, that is to be covered in this meeting, and I'm not opposed. If, if the body is not opposed, we can discuss it at this point. Mr. Brown, if you, you want to lead this portion and just kind of hit where we, we've kind of had some conversation on?
Yes, ma'am, I, I will, I'll add some remarks. So, under item, what is listed as 3D, establishing funding categories would be, where you would then take those categories and talk about percentages. One of the first things we were hoping to get from the committee is, we recognize that the council, in general, had talked about wanting to provide some direct funds to the community. So, separate and apart from any other investments that you would make, with this organization or other organizations, you wanted to provide some direct funding access. So with that being the case, what we thought and talked through was a general idea of no more than $2 million related to specific access. And that may be high for some, you might think that's high, you might think it's not high enough, but.
Can I just clarify, when you say $2 million, is that of the total, or is that from just the second allotment? What are you saying?
That's $2 million, period.
Period, okay.
Period. So, if you were saying, you know, Administrator, will you make a recommendation on behalf of the amount of money that you would put out there? $2 million is an amount I would be comfortable with, and I say it that way because, again, I would just speak to you, of the $80 million, as an organization, as a county, we have substantial needs that would utilize all of those funds. So, with the understanding that we still want to have some opportunities to support the community, I believe $2 million is a significant amount of money, which will allow multiple entities to potentially have access. And from that $2 million, you would then determine how you would want to apportion that, allowing some potentially for businesses that were negatively impacted, that may need to have recovery dollars, or who are public health-related, or nonprofit entities to serve individuals who are negatively impacted, that could utilize these funds. And then when you break down those percentages, the next step would be to determine, and that's where I think you maybe have your, your committees come in. Those committees would not be staff members. This is what your committees would have, whoever your appropriate, either experts or nonprofit entities that have served in these kind of capacities, would kind of fill that gap. But that $2 million would allow anywhere up to any number of applications. I think at one point we thought about $50,000, you know, grants, which would serve a quite a few number of organizations. But that, that would be my initial recommendation, Ms. Mackey, not fully thought out, because I was certainly taking feedback from the, the committee. The thought would be, it's a significant amount of money to apply to the community for direct access to funds, but not so much where it would inhibit other opportunities that you might want to address as an organization. So hopefully that's not too wordy, but that's kind of the, the stream of consciousness that we were talking around the, the idea.
Thank you. Livingston.
Mr. Brown, $2 million is, when you look at the total pot that's going to be available, have we spent any of the, allocated any of the new $40 million we have not received yet?
We have not allocated any of the new $40 million we have received, sir. In your packet, maybe on page 49, 499, if you want to just grab that real quick.
And I did not read all 500 pages.
No, that's not why I'm trying to do that. I'm just saying, if you pull it out now, what it would do is it would show you a list of what we have allocated, and it would show you.
I'm sorry, what's the page number again?
499, I believe is what it's listed as.
Oh, I stopped at 491, no wonder.
No, I understood, sir, I understood, just a few more turns. But that should represent, that's the money that has been allocated so far. So that, and that should tell you how much funds we have remaining. So for those who can't, well, first of all, do, do you see that on page 499? Okay, so that shows you of the remaining funds that we have, you know, how much is not spent, which includes the $40 million plus an additional roughly $20 million from the initial tranche that we received. So there's roughly $60 million of unallocated funding related to the American Rescue Plan dollars received by Richland County that have not been allocated or spoken for at this point in time, Mr. Chair, Mr. Livingston.
Thank you, I had to answer my question.
Madam Chair, may I be recognized?
Okay.
So, help me out here, Mr. Brown. This is a simple question. I thought I heard you say that we were waiting for the second installment of $40 million to arrive by July of 2022, or do we already have that second installment?
We do not have the second installment.
Okay, all right.
So today in the coffers, we would have roughly $20 million.
Got it, and so when you say the remaining funds, the remaining funds that's transcribed on page 499, that includes, or at least that's anticipating, the $40 million, the second installment we are, we're expecting from the federal government, which again, should arrive by no later than July 2022.
That's the expectation, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Newton, before I recognize you, just want to say that when we started putting this, these documents together, one of the things that I asked Administrator Brown and his team is to give us big picture of everything together so that we know this is the total amount of money that we are anticipating, so that we can just go ahead and divide it up with everything, and not having to come back to the table after we get the 40, additional $40 million. Ms. Newton, you're recognized.
Madam Chair, my point was going to be on kind of the broader topic that you mentioned before, so I don't want to hijack this conversation if somebody else wanted to talk about the idea that we were kicking around about the $2 million. So, nope, okay. So first, from, from my perspective, I guess like Mr. Brown, I do feel like there are a lot of needs that we have in the community, and so I feel, you know, comfortable with, with the $2 million, or, you know, even if, I, I don't want to make it cumbersome, but sometimes, you know, you start a process and you learn from it, and then you tweak it, so I don't know if we'd want to, you know, implement like half of it, you know, regroup and then do it again. But one question that I wanted us to raise to consider as part of our guidelines, and I don't have those old guidelines, so I don't know how we addressed it. But one thing that I think will be important if we're giving funds to nonprofits is to decide if Richland County funds can cover operational expenses, and that, and if so, to have really specific guidelines around that. So let me just pick a random nonprofit, I'm not involved with this nonprofit, but I was having a conversation with somebody about transitions. So let's say, for example, that you say it's important for us to provide increased services to our homeless population because of people impacted by COVID. My understanding is that transitions hasn't had any empty beds ever since the course of the pandemic. Well, one of the ways that they're going to provide more services is they might need more staff, right? That's an operational expense. But additionally, transitions provides meals, and I don't know if you, like in the news, I hear these reports where takeout containers used to cost like a dollar a container, now they cost $5 a container. Well, that hits transitions too. And again, those are operational expenses. And I don't say this to say that we either have to cover them or not cover them, because there's a whole host of operational expenses for some organizations we may not want to pay. I only raise it to say that I do think it's something that we would need to clearly address in our guidelines if we're going to allow those operational expenses, and then, just to make sure that we cover that, because there are a lot of organizations in the area that can be struggling in similar ways as they look at their costs, and it's impacting their ability to provide for now and for later. So I just raised that, thank you.
Excellent point, and, and I think that that's something that, I, I don't recall seeing that in this application when I was looking at it, but it is something that we want to make sure that it's an allowable expense that we can cover.
That's what the body wants, right.
So, with that, I, I think, I, I think we feel pretty good with the $2 million that was put out there. So, for the sake of this, the remainder of this meeting, we're, we're going to operate with that in mind, knowing that we're going to spend $2 million in the community, and the remaining balance will be spent on other projects. So that's, that's where we'll go there if the.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
All right, and just to clarify, so if you're going off the $2 million amount and looking at this spreadsheet on 499, then that means at this point we have slightly less than a million for nonprofits, or to allocate in general? Is that what they're saying? Or you just, what are you?
So if of the $60 million, $61 million that you're looking at, if this body wanted to allocate $2 million, you would take this total pot and then subtract $2 million from it? So it's, it's a solid $2 million.
$2 million, period.
Not the lump sums or any of that, this is a brand-new pot of money.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, please.
And Ms. Newton raises a question only as an example, so I'm not trying to, you know, delve there into a rabbit hole, but I think if you look at page in your packet, I think it's 21 and 22, and then it's 23 and 24. 23 and 24 are the nonprofits. And for example, it shows you in there, in NACO's guidance, what would be eligible uses and what you could potentially be looking at. So, when you get a chance, this will give you an idea of some of the things that, as you think about how I want to address or support the community, you will have a, you know, again, a kind of a quick snapshot of some things that you know. you will have a, you know, again, a kind of a quick snapshot of some things that you know are good. Uh, one of the things I would recommend is if you don't want to impose additional hardships on nonprofits or entities, anything that is not directly eligible, I would not approve unless you want them to do what we're going to have to do with some of our items and provide justification. And the justification that has to be provided are not things that, even as NACO talked about it, in general, these are things that can be onerous for entities that don't have the staffing and workforce. So not to knock anybody out, they're still be potentially eligible, but the requirements are still the requirements. Richland County cannot afford to take on that responsibility on behalf of a sub recipient.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, because you do, you do lift a, another point of discussion that I think, uh, Ms. Newton and I had it, or I don't know if it was Ms. Thomas, is that when we are looking to put these funds in, whether it's in the community or even, um, with some of our other village agencies or even internally, we want to make sure that these dollars can be sustained after twenty twenty-four. And that is going to be, that's, when we talk about community nonprofits and their capacity to be able to handle, whether it's fifty thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars, we don't, what, I, I know for me, I wouldn't want a nonprofit providing services to, to residents in Richland County and they do a phenomenal job with the fifty thousand dollars we give them. And then once that fifty thousand dollars is dried up, then the services go away. So we wanted, we, that's, that's another point that we want to make sure that as we fund these projects, that they're sustainable and that these organizations have the capacity to keep this ball moving after twenty twenty-four.
Madam Chair?
Right, you recognize.
Uh, and I just wanted to say too is that when you're dealing with the federal government, if you use the money or if it's used in a way that they in the future deemed it was not, um, in an eligible way, you have to pay that money back. So we don't want to have to pay back two million dollars or however many millions of dollars. So we want to make sure that whatever we use it for is eligible.
Absolutely. And, um, Ms., Ms. Thomas is probably want to flip out her chair at this point. Uh, and that's one of the things that she's really, uh, experi- expressed passionately about that we want to make sure that we're accountable for every dollar that goes out of our account into someone else's. Uh, so with that, we're, let's operate on this conversation, Mr. Brown, at this point that we're, we're spending two million dollars in the community. The remaining balance will be, I don't know, we, we'll just call it, um, we'll just call it the balance, the balance. We'll call it the balance. And, and we know that that pot, let's talk about that pot of money at this point. So the remaining balance, what's our, um, as, as you see, as we, as we've discussed before, what would we like to do with those dollars that are remaining?
So certainly I don't want to detract from the committee's conversation to me. Um, but i- in general, those broader communication that they said they would be eligible for, so certainly we have, uh, sewer infrastructure needs that we need to address, um, from a public health standpoint. Uh, we have, um, the DSS facility that we need to address. Uh, we also have from a public, uh, health standpoint, uh, the ability, uh, as a matter of fact, this is one of the things that the final guidance made directly available that was not previously eligible, an emergency operations center. Um, you're familiar with where our EMS is generally housed. You have that. Um, we certainly know that we've talked about discussions with other facilities, infrastructure needs that we have. And, uh, the guidance allows for, uh, addressing those facility needs. Everything from, uh, your technology infrastructure, you know, we have needs there. Um, so, you know, if I just took the top three that I said, potentially that, that, the eighty million dollars, for those of you who are familiar with the project you did with Water Sewer, um, in southeast, um, you know that, that could be gone. So what we're simply saying is, as we balance out those various needs, we recognize that we have, uh, organizations that are paper driven, that could be, um, instrumentally helped by, uh, technology. We've done that with our own grant management software. You've, uh, uh, initially approved that. And there are other areas like that. So I mean, it's, it's a lot of different things that, that we could be doing. And I can get more specific as, as time goes on, but just from a broad standpoint, even if we went with initiatives that the council has already put, uh, in our focus, like DSS, you're talking about by itself, anywhere up was, well, I had to put numbers out, this man, I was going to get mad at me. Uh, but you know, it's a, it's a upward millions of dollars kind of project, so right? So we, we do know that based off our experience with the public safety complex. So I just want you to consider those general themes when you talk about the large pot and how you're thinking about allocating funds. Uh, but again, we don't want to seem like we're being selfish. We recognize the community has an issue, uh, that we're a part of that. But, but we certainly don't want you to think that, you know, you can move all this money outside of the county and everything would be better for it. We, we definitely have some internal needs that will be well addressed and be longstanding answers to some of the issues that we're talking about in our community.
Newton?
I, I'll yield to some of my other colleagues that haven't asked as many questions yet.
Brown, didn't we have some priorities from, from feedback we got from constituents?
Yes, sir. And I believe in your packet, you're going to make me do it to you again, Mr. Livingston. I think that's page five hundred.
It's the last.
And five oh one.
I knew it had to be five oh one.
And I know, just, just ran four ninety-one, so sorry about that.
It's the last two items.
So, um, and that's also establishing funding priorities that was listed on your, in your packet. And so what you have there was, this was basically an initial community survey. Uh, and it does not represent, um, you know, hundreds of thousands of people. So I'm not going to, to tell you that. It, it, you're talking about a couple hundred people who responded. So this was the response. And what we did take from here, and the reason why we used this to further illustrate that potential DSS project was because a lot of the things that were pointed out, even by the, the, the number of people that responded, were related to those types of services. So we thought that that pointed that out. But, um, that's where that survey is, sir, is the American Rescue Plan survey. And there, there are some priorities, if you want to call them that, that were denoted from here. And many of those involve social services. Um, and the top five were services for abused and neglected children, street improvements, mental health, support services, transitional housing. Um, and then below that, you had emergency shelters, permanent housing, broadband infrastructure, services for victims of domestic violence and veterans. And then you kind of had some more below that. So, uh, that's kind of why we felt like in general, we were right on track between the community and the council when we talked about the DSS facility, just for example.
And we will use this in our decision-making with the grants and.
That, that would be something that we're looking for feedback from, from the committee, hopefully from council as to what criteria you want to use, what eligibility standards you want to see, and, and then who will do those things, whether that will be some type, some type of committee or some type of other organization that processes this kind of stuff, um, on behalf of the county. So those are all questions that we're hoping to have the committee kind of give us feedback on. But that's a good question, Mr. Livingston.
So, Mr. Mr. Walker, before you speak, if I may, uh, one of the topics for our discussion today is that we would provide some sense of guidance to Mr. Brown and his team, looking at the information, the data that we have, um, that he just referenced, as well as things that this body may feel as though is important and priorities for our community. So that when individuals apply for a grant, if they're, you know, a part of a bi- a bicycling club and that's not a priority that we've listed, then they are deemed ineligible. But we've got to be able to craft and at least give Mr. Brown and his team some marching orders to say from this document and from what we've heard from our residents in Richland County, these are the priority, um, categories. Mr. Walker?
I didn't have a question, Madam Chair. I was pointing to Mr. Livingston.
Oh, okay. So, go ahead, Ms. Newton.
No, no, previously. I'm good.
Okay.
So, thank you. And I guess I would say to your point, Mr. Brown, as we're evaluating all these things, I very much would like to see administration provide a list that says, these are the things that are identified Richland County priorities and, you know, these are the estimated costs because that all goes into our discussion. Because while we're looking at, you know, what a few hundred citizens said to us, we're also looking at what the thirty-five thousand people that each of us represent have said to us. We're looking at the priorities that we see. I think that that's a very important input. And not having that, um, i- is, is a detriment to the decision-making process, I think.
Thank you, Ms. Newton. That's a very good point. And I, and I think that if we, I think we could do both. I, I would like to see us do both, is to continue the conversation just a little bit further to say, looking at this data a- as well as with whoever we heard from, to give Mr. Brown some sense of, um, input to say, okay, this is what we're thinking. So this is, this is the time that we want to do that. We want to share some of those priorities with him at this moment. Then he can marry our list to his list and then we'll have something that we can work from.
No, but just to be clear, I absolutely agree. I wasn't trying to say, no, let's end the work session and do lists. I just wanted to point out that I, I think it's a valuable input because I brought my list. I'm, I'm ready.
Let's go. We can start with you.
Uh, but Ms. Mackey wanted to say something. You would be wrong if I left my list right now.
Go ahead, Ms. Mackey.
Thank you. Um, I don't necessarily have a list. I just had some comments. Um, so I guess looking at the priorities and, and overall, wanted to go back to the comment you made earlier about the possibility of, um, match, uh, that the state mentioned. And so looking at also knowing that other agencies may get funding as well, I would like to think about, are there opportunities for us to partner with agencies to deliver some services, right? So that we maybe have a, a larger impact on some of the things we do where we're not the sole, uh, provider of funds. And I don't know if that is, I think when we first think of, okay, what's a, a category looking at roads or, um, street improvements, if there's ability to partner a- and, you know, not have to foot the entire bill, but combine our money with another agency's money to help do some of those improvements, I would like some of those to be considered at maybe the top of the list. Same thing if it's a nonprofit and we can partner with another agency to help.
Very good point. Thank you. Uh, so Ms. Newton, you, are you ready to, to share your list?
Oh, are we there? Sure.
Yep.
And I, I think that some of these things are, are already items that are encompassing some of the priorities that, that we talked about, but a, a few things. Um, one is, um, just from conversations that, that I've had, it seems to me that there is still a need for emergency rental assistance that while we have been able to help a great number of citizens with the funds that we've received thus far and some of the additional funds that we're going to receive, um, there does still seem to be a need. So I would love it if emergency rental assistance was one of the things that we could evaluate as we're moving forward for additional funding. I also wonder if, and I'm, I'm just speaking broadly here, um, as we looked at the first round of the CARES Act funds, trying to remember what everything was called, we were in a position where we provided some assistance to small businesses. I don't know if that's something that would be considered part of the, the two million dollar, um, set aside or, or not. But, you know, as we discussed, there are a lot of businesses that are experiencing these supply chain costs, these, these initial costs and just, I would love it if we could look at opportunities where we could, um, support that community. It's already on our list and I know I had meetings, you know, this past summer with some of our, um, staff here, but, um, the coronavirus pandemic has really, really exposed a lot of the challenges that we have with access to broadband. There's a lot of, there are a lot of items that go into broadband and I know that the state has some funds that they're going to offer. I was never under the impression that counties like Richland County were going to be on the top of the, the broadband allocation list. So I think that that's an area where we will have to take some more definite steps. And without getting into the weeds on that, there's a lot of foundational work that needs to happen with broadband. I know like, I, I spoke with Ms. Thomas about it a while ago. I know I spoke with our, our T staff in terms of the way that we do our mapping and the data that we have to allow that to happen. So would love for us to, between the funds that we have, as Ms. Mackey mentioned, some of our partners and the things that they're doing, the funds that the state is doing, I think that this is an opportunity where we can really make a lot of progress as it relates to broadband. And then what I'm hearing, and I don't, I don't know how we would deal with it, but, um, I, you know, had an opportunity to have some conversations with nonprofits and we'll continue to do that and with some people that I know in the social work community. Again, it's in the priorities, a lot around, um, mental health, um, and, and how we can support those communities. And then I guess finally, I'll say this, I wasn't going to raise the, the water and infrastructure issues, but if there's state funding that will help with that, I know that, you know, quite apart from the far rural communities, there's, there are some communities that I know that are, that are in my area that are surrounded, literally surrounded by sewer that's provided by the city. But because they are in a complicated geographical spot, the city has declined to offer services. The county isn't offering services in those areas and it's an opportunity where at least some initial, you know, engineering can be done on that. And then, sorry, you, you asked. Um, finally, um, you know, one of the things that, um, the CARES, not CARES Act now, I went back in time, the ARP funds is to, to look at are consequences of COVID. And one of the, the areas that's covered there is recreation. And as we look at, you know, kids that, that need things to do and some of these compound problems, I would love it. I know we, we were able to, you know, address some funds towards the, one of the tennis courts, but I do think that opportunities to look at, um, look at recreational support would be appropriate. And Madam Chair, I'm, I'm done with my list for now. Thank you.
Thank you. So Livingston?
One of them is, I think came up, is the whole idea of food insecurity. And you know, there's, you know, for example, there are groups now looking at ways to get farmland, do vegetables and things, and they need to figure out a way for us to do something in that area that's sustainable. And I think we can take advantage of that and do that. And that way we can make sure that those folks in our community will continue to have, you know, fresh vegetables and so forth. So, so I would love to see a wonderful grant and talk about how they can put together a sustainable foods kids program. Focus on good, healthy vegetables and so forth.
Of course.
Um, also too, I've had some folks who kind of envy the rental assistance program because although they have a home, but the repairs, they, they can't, they don't have the funds to repair them. Um, I'm talking about for a roof leak or for a, um, um, busted pipe and so forth. Those things are, are costly now. And particularly a lot of our senior citizens who are still trying to live at home. So I see a big need to figure out some kind of way, maybe to look at some type of, of home repair program for some folks who, who desperately need, they have a home, but, but they can't live in comfortable with. And they feel like they're being left out a- as, as, as way relative to the renter. Something like that might be helpful. Probably stop at those two and let somebody else go.
Thank you, Mr. Livingston. Ms. Mackey?
Thank you. Um, I did agree with the, the food insecurity or I think that's a, a good one to look at for sure. And then also housing, I think we've had conversations and some other groups about just the housing options in our county. I think we all see it, you know, throughout the county and the state. Just the housing market right now is, is difficult. We have a shortage. But then also just affordable housing, people being able to, to find, uh, affordable housing. So looking in, into that along with, um, the rental assistance piece, housing in general, I think is some.
Thank you.
Newton? I promise I'll be quick. Um, Mr. Livingston made me remember something. Um, speaking about envy about the emergency rental assistance, there is some envy around mortgage assistance because just because, just because you own your home doesn't mean you aren't still paying for it. And so, you know, quite apart from any repairs, that there are just people who have had trouble holding on. And so, the emergency rental assistance, we were bound by the federal government, but we might want to, to look at it that way. And one area that I really haven't been able to figure out an appropriate way that we could address, but again, Mr. Livingston's comments reminded me, is what if anything can we do that's going to provide support and assistance, assistance for our seniors? Because what we have is a situation where costs are going up for everybody, but they're on fixed incomes and they're not going up. And again, within the grant guidelines, I'm, I'm not sure what some of those opportunities are. I know, you know, sometimes we can assist with utilities, sometimes we can assist with this, but even before the pandemic got bad, I really feel like there was an outcry from a lot of the seniors, and it's worse now. So I don't know how we can assist with that, but it would be wonderful if we could. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Chair, if I may be recognized? Uh, I would like for, uh, this body to consider, um, tuition assistance, you know, for Richland County High School graduates, uh, who enroll at Mittlin's Tech. I know there's been a lot of talk around the country, uh, about, uh, tuition-free college or specifically, uh, tuition-free, uh, technical college. And I know that is something that, um, Mittlin's Tech, I know they've been promoting that, uh, over the past year. And so I would like to see if that is something, uh, that we could, uh, earmark, at least some of these funds, um, toward, uh, as far as just offering, uh, tuition assistance to Richland County High School graduates who decide to attend, uh, you know, the technical college, one of the technical college campuses, uh, here in Richland County. Uh, I think there's also been chatter around the country over the past couple of years, uh, also about just student loan debt. And I believe the Biden Administration recently extended, uh, the moratorium on student loan payments through May. Uh, but I know that this would certainly go, you know, a long way as, as far as, uh, helping those students who want to go to college, and, uh, maybe they don't have the records of GPA to, uh, perhaps they'll receive a scholarship, but yet we have funding there that can assist them if they decide to attend, uh, one of the local community colleges. So this is something I think would be good, uh, for, uh, this body, uh, to consider, especially since, uh, uh, the issue of student loan, uh, payments, uh, has been an issue nationally, and even more so, uh, during the throes of COVID. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Rasio, you're recognized.
Thank you. Um, and I've, I love what, uh, Mr. Walker said about, um, assistance for tuition, uh, not just, I would extend that maybe not even just to immediate high school graduates, but maybe folks who need to seek, um, some retraining, uh, for job opportunities.
Madam Chair, just one final thing, as Mr. Rasio was speaking, um, I thought about something, and I believe Ms. Mackey has hit on this, and I think Ms. Newton, uh, also referenced it. But in terms of housing, uh, you know, we do have, uh, well, we used the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, uh, that is something that is currently before the Development and Services, uh, Committee. Uh, the body hasn't, uh, certainly we haven't made a decision on it yet, we're still doing our due diligence, uh, but I think that, um, you know, these funds could be, I think would be, um, would be useful, uh, with respect to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund in the event that the body decides that it's something that we want to do, we have the framework in place for it, um, they could be good if, uh, if we were to, you know, consider earmarking some of these funds, um, you know, for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund in the event that the body decides, uh, that, uh, that is something we want to establish here in Richland County.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. And to each one of you, uh, I do want to, I want to start, um, with your last point, and that's the Housing Trust Fund. I, I know that we've had several conversations about this, but, um, Ms. Thomas, please remind us, uh, of what the guidance, what the final guidance said about a Housing Trust Fund? Because I know before there was, we, we were not able to use those funds for that. Uh, so if you could just kind of enlighten us on that point before I continue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, there are ways that we can earmark some money for a Housing Trust Fund, but keep in mind that any funds that are allocated that have to be committed to be spent by 2024, by December 31st, 2024, and must be expended by December 31st, 2026. So this cannot be socked away. Uh, it's money that has to be spent, um, yeah, because the idea of it was to help to, to mark the recovery of the economy.
Madam Chair, all right, can I ask a follow-up just on what she said? So I understand it has to be spent, is the money able to be, uh, kind of used for incentives or tax credits for developers who build affordable housing and not actually being put in a trust fund? Or can the money not be used like that?
I would have to do a little bit more research on that. The money can be used to assist with the startup of housing and to provide the housing. However, what would have to happen is that you would have to show that the developer's project also met the guidelines to be completed by that time. So you have to basically show a proportionate, uh, reward for using the funds.
Thank you. Thank you, um, Ms. Thomas. So I, I want to rehash, I, I, I'm, I want to rehash some topics that we've, that we've gathered here today, because I think that some of them are very specific topics, however they can, and we'll, and so we'll leave this to Mr. Brown and his team to give us maybe a more broader topics where these other items can fall under. But there was, um, there was two, three items that were not mentioned that I had on my list, and that was, uh, crime prevention and public safety. I think that that's something that we, we would be able to spend some of our funds for. We've already used some of them, uh, for our public safety, but when we look at, um, even looking at the infrastructure for our jail and other things like that, I think if we prioritize and put that forward, we'll be able to, that's going to be a, a big help. And then homelessness, we're seeing that even the impacts of COVID, people have lost their homes, people, the, the, I think we mentioned, transition was early, was mentioned earlier, a lot of the individuals who provide housing for homeless individuals, they're busting at the seams. So I think that we want to be mindful of that. So here are some of the, the high level, or just, our, this is our overall list. And Mr. Brown, we, we're, we're passing this back to you as our priority list, and you can shape it and kind of make it doll it up and look real pretty here, but we've got youth services, parks and recreation, mortgage assistance, crime prevention, public safety, small businesses, mental health, homelessness, food insecurity, home repairs, affordable housing, tuis- tuition assistance, student loan payment assistance, Housing Trust Fund or incentives. Looking at our rental assistance program, again, broadband, water, and senior assistance. So those are.
Newton said mortgage assistance, if I was.
Yeah, I, I, I covered that one.
Okay.
Yeah, I covered that one, that was also on my list as well. Missed it, did you, did I miss one as well? Or you want one, you want to add one?
I did.
Okay.
Sorry. Mr. Brown, this, this is really unglamorous, but this is a lot of money that we have to administer. And so as part of the recommendations that come back, I mean, I don't want to jump the gun, I don't know if there are places where we need additional staff to do it, where we need outside help to do it, where we need additional software to do it, but again, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of administration, there's a lot of record-keeping, because we always want to be on the right side of all of our grant reporting. And so I just put that out there, that if there are, again, it's not glamorous, but we, we gotta manage the workload, if there are some type of administrative-related items that are going to allow us to efficiently provide these resources for the community, that I would love to see that reflected as well.
Uh, Ms. Newton, if, this is, this will be a great segue for us to talk about, a- and we've pretty much just jumped all over between A to C, uh, here today, but I guess this is what a work session will do for you. Um, but here, we do have on our agenda to talk about a third-party agency who could possibly help administration, uh, with the, with administering the funds of this, uh, because it is, it's, this is a heavy, heavy lift for our team. We already know that, um, you guys are, you're doing, you're doing the best you can with what you have, right? Um, but I, uh, it's just like I heard someone talking about, um, the IRS, and there was the taxes and everything that IRS has been put through be- as an impact of COVID. You know, the, the stimulus checks came from the IRS, and now everybody's mad because they, they want their income taxed and they want it now. Well, they're the same group that got their budget cut, um, just a couple of years ago. So, uh, we don't want that to happen here. And so if you would, talk about some options that we may have to, um, to really help you and your team administer this grant project.
Sure. One of the things that we thought would be important, uh, not because we don't feel like we have good qualified people, but what we know is that the good qualified people that we have, have capacity limits. And so what we thought would be good sense, both for, uh, general, maybe community support and encouragement, is that if we did potentially have a third-party provider who is used to managing these types of programs where they're, uh, dealing with applications, looking at those applications through whatever criteria that we submit, and then meeting out those funds, um, that, that would potentially provide, uh, a level of, I think, trust-building, as well as folks being focused on what's available in funding and not focused on, you know, who's giving out the funds and whether or not the county is, you know, picking and choosing winner. So, uh, beyond just a staffing concern, thank you, Ms. Newton, for bringing that up. Um, our concern was, how do we do the good that we're trying to do, and it also not only have the tangible effect, but have the perception that can, that, that, uh, matches with that as well? And we thought just having staff manage that internally would create potential issues, whether that's from internal thought processes or, you know, others who may, who may think that, again, the staff was picking and choosing winner. So, uh, we thought that we want the committee to consider having a provider that's a nonprofit type of entity that we could partner with, um, that could administer whatever external funding grants that we're going to provide. Uh, and then you would determine how that, how that's done. Um, and that could involve a committee, uh, that, that, you know, funnels things up to the third-party provider or some nature of that. So we tried to involve the community, tried to involve, involve another third-party to, again, take the staff out of the idea, because to Ms. Newton's point, one of the things that we did early on was we did come to the council, even though it was kind of, you know, one step at a time, and we said, here are some things that initially we know we need, but at the same time, we didn't want to make it seem like we're going to just try to take all these funds up, even though we know full well that the needs justify that. And so, uh, now that we've had an opportunity to have a conversation and have a dialogue and get feedback from the committee that you want to be able to do something, but keeping everything in, in re- uh, respect, uh, we think that's, that's good. And so we'll certainly come back and provide a, a detailed list of items, uh, that we know the fund could be used for and that are needs that the county has. Um, but that process as a whole, we did think from my outside perspective, you probably should have some other filters beyond just the staff. So, um, if it were a recommendation, I would make a recommendation, in this instance, with this much money that you involve a third-party, how you involve that third-party, uh, one would be to administer the funds, and two, potentially, you would want either that party or another party that's also screening to determine eligibility based off the committee's and council's criteria and not based off staff. Because the guidance has already been given, so any additional requirements would really be a function of committee and council.
But, actually, I just said, I would strongly support.
Yeah, I, I definitely support that wholeheartedly. Uh, Ms. Newton, any, anybody else have any feedback about the third-party? Um, because what I, what, the way I envision our next steps, and I'll just do it right now, uh, since I know individuals have to leave, is that when we finish this meeting, that we would schedule another committee meeting where we would be able to take action on the discussions that we had today. Um, and so with that, I, that's why I'm just kind of, we're just kind of having some conversations, so Mr. Brown and his team are fully aware of what, what our thoughts are. That's, okay, so with that, I think we're clear with the third-party. Um, good grief, I don't know where I need, where, where are we on this agenda here?
I think you've really touched everything. The only thing which I don't think you could necessarily do right now is get into application deadlines and the like, because you haven't really established, you know, that. But I, I think you've pretty much touched everything, Madam Chair.
And it's so, with that, I, I want to encourage the committee, and I know that some documents got lost in, in, at the back of the final guidance. So, um, we will not kill a tree next, for our next committee meeting. Um, but so with that, I, I'm like for us to just kind of take a look at the application that's in there, because that's something I think I, I definitely would like for us to spend some time fleshing out. I have several questions, um, and points of concern that I'd like for us to just kind of, um, look at as we move forward with it, with our next meeting. Um, so with that, uh, if there is nothing else, our next item on the agenda is adjournment.
Oops, Madam Chair.
I'll second that. All right. Uh, Ms. Carrillo, if you'll call the role for adjournment.
Aaron?
Yes?
Livingston? Newton? Motion approved to adjourn.
Thank you. It needs two hours.